Okay, welcome everyone to our special meeting. I'm convening the special meeting of May 16th at 3:00 PM. This is the last in a series of budget work sessions for the fiscal year 2023 budget. Recognize Ms. Michelle Lancaster for comments.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, board members. As the chairman just mentioned, today is the final departmental budget presentations for FY23, and we'll get started with those presentations shortly. Today, we have public communications, cooperative extension, legal services, soil and water conservation, and solid waste, and they will just go in that order once we get started. Additionally, we have a quarterly capital project update from Beverly Lyles. This is something that we asked Beverly to put together at the beginning of the fiscal year for ongoing quarterly report of all capital projects that have been approved by the board. This is a report that has given you a lot of information. It's for information only, but since this is the first time you're seeing it, if you have feedback on the information that's included, other things you would like to see, this is a good opportunity to let us know that. We also have Blake's Third Quarter Year End Estimate Budget Report as part of this final workshop, and those will be the two items that we finish with. So if there aren't any questions, we will get started with Liz and then move through the other departments.
Good afternoon. Chairman, Vice Chairman, Commissioners, Manager Watson and management team, thank you for the opportunity. I'm Liz Cooper, Director of Public Communications. You may be familiar with my predecessor, Catherine Brown. I had the opportunity to serve under her as her Assistant Director, and when she recently accepted an opportunity in the private sector, I had the opportunity to be promoted to Director. So I appreciate the opportunity to share with you today about public communications and the work we do. The objectives and goals accomplished by public communications most closely align with the board's strategic objective of community consensus, although we are closely tied to other objectives, including sustainability and organizational strengthening in particular. Public communications serves all Union County residents and all employees of Union County government by strategically distributing valuable, relevant, and often actionable information through a variety of channels in a timely manner. Engaging people and building relationships is what we do every day, both with community members, stakeholders, and employees of Union County government. We work directly with every department to share vital information about their programs, services, and initiatives. Public communications formed in mid-2019 as a strategic initiative by the management team to consolidate communications across the organization for a more strategic, thoughtful, and planned approach to both internal and external communications. FY23 will be our fourth budget year with the county. What you see on the screen, these are our primary programs: marketing and communication strategies, creative services, media relations, public record requests, AV support, event planning, and employee recognition programs. And because of the nature of what we do, we support and work directly with every county department for internal and external communication needs. We currently have six full-time employees. We will soon have a seventh to fill a vacancy. I like to say that our team is small but mighty. We stay busy and really enjoy what we do. Funding for all of our current programs and services are through county dollars. The public communications budget covers the foundational marketing and communication needs of the county while strategically investing in areas that will continue to improve our processes, help our team be more efficient, and enable us to continue to promote the county as a favorable place to live and do business. Highlights of some of our investments continued from previous budget years include foundational digital solutions that support website and social media development, measurements, monitoring, and accessibility monitoring. Our project management system was built for project and marketing and communications teams. It's called CoSchedule. It is a cloud-based solution that covers all aspects of our project management, our social media management, and digital asset management. It helps our team be more efficient by creating approvals and workflows for publishing processes, and we're also able to receive high-level analytics from social media platforms. AV upgrades at several county facilities, and we will continue to support the implementation of our refreshed brand across the organization and promotion of Union County. The quantitative ways we measure success are directly related to the primary ways we interact with our residents in the community. That includes the website, social media, traditional media, and public record requests. The sophistication of tracking these metrics has evolved, and we've developed better methods for consistently tracking these performance indicators. Website visits remain consistent at an average of 327,000 a month. The number of followers across the county's social media platforms of Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, and LinkedIn has grown 15% in the last year and a half. Our monthly social media engagement rate, and that is calculated by the number of engagements that includes a like, comment, or share divided by the total number of posts, that averaged 25% last fiscal year, which is significantly above average engagement rate for most industries, and is particularly impressive given that social media platforms frequently change the algorithm with which content users see. We also track media inquiries. That includes an initial request as well as interactions like an interview. Those totaled 251 last fiscal year for an average of about 21 each month, and we have seen a tremendous increase in the number of public record requests. From calendar year 2020 to calendar year 2021, we saw a 46% increase. Managing record requests requires strong organization and coordination with multiple county departments, as well as with our management team and legal team. To maximize efficiency, we will soon implement a public record request management platform with approved ARPA funds that will streamline the process for coordinating and responding to those requests. I won't go through all of these recent accomplishments, but in FY19, PC was only a department for two months in that budget year. The accomplishments in our first two months focused primarily on strategizing best practices for communications and the channels we use. That included taking inventory of existing platforms, updating protocols and processes, and developing a countywide editorial calendar. We introduced a new model for communication support for all departments so that every county department has a go-to person on public communications when they have a communications need request, you know, marketing campaign that they'd like to implement. In FY20, we launched our video storytelling initiative. The second half of that fiscal year was primarily focused, as you can imagine, on COVID communications. We were in the EOC every day with public health and emergency management, coordinating all of the information released to the public in partnership with public health, managing numerous media requests, and developing creative materials, videos, graphics, that would help share information in a timely manner. We revamped our community e-newsletter, which is now named the Union County Horizon. We send that out every Friday to a subscriber list of approximately 65,000 emails, and that is our largest channel in terms of audience. FY21, we developed our new branding and visual identity with the new logo, which has been the largest project PC has taken on to date, and that implementation continues. We kicked off the website redesign project, which took nearly a year, coordinated numerous events for the organization, and proud to say that we won three NC-3C awards. That's the North Carolina City County Communicator Awards. And this fiscal year, we launched our new website in January. We are launching the UC Store tomorrow to all employees. It's an online store only for county employees that will streamline the procurement of county-branded items and apparel, and it ensures consistency with the new brand, eliminates unnecessary and duplicate setup costs across the organization, and allows us to receive value pricing from bulk orders. And we recently developed a new component with our employee recognition program, these You Rock note cards that were just distributed this week to all county departments. It's a smaller way that employees across the organization can show appreciation, boost morale among their work groups, so it's just a little value add with our employee recognition programs, and if you want some, I have plenty for you. Our key initiatives for the next budget year: investing in new technology with the implementation of Next Request will allow us to more efficiently respond and process public record requests. This is a leading industry tool that will streamline that process and save hours of staff time. The Internet redesign: we recently redesigned our public-facing website, as you know, and our next big web project is to redesign our Internet, which you may know as County Connect. The internal site for county employees is tied to the strategic objective of organizational strengthening. That project kicks off in the next couple of weeks with Granicus, the same vendor that redesigned our external website. We anticipate that Internet going live by March 1st of 2023. Branding implementation will continue to be a key initiative, establishing that visual impact and connection to the Union County brand. Again, that includes the UC Store that I previously mentioned, which streamlines procurement of county-branded items. It also includes a countywide print contract that we will soon be putting out an RFP for that will be consolidating items departments previously purchased on their own and leveraging the organization's size to negotiate best pricing on materials that were previously purchased separately by departments. Future issues, challenges, opportunities: we have more residents communicating with us, and that is both from a growing community as well as just sheer access and ability in today's digital culture. So the challenge is continuing to best serve and respond in a timely manner. It's our role, of course, to make sure county residents have access to information that is accurate and in a timely manner, and I know that the programs the county implements are only effective if people know about them. Demand for the creative ways to showcase those programs, services, and initiatives continues to increase. That includes infographics, social media graphics, videos. So we now know that that is how people prefer to receive information. They want quick, they want easy to understand, and they want that content to be engaging. Additionally, with the same challenge of meeting the needs of a growing community is, again, the stark increase in public record requests. It has been very difficult to manage. Previously, it was just one person receiving and coordinating those responses, and that would be me. That workload, to be honest, has been overwhelming, so I'm confident that the new technology we're investing in will mean better management of the increased requests, resulting in faster turnaround times, particularly for some of the very large and complex requests that we receive. Branding consistency: we've developed tools like a very robust brand guide that will help educate both internal and external stakeholders on why consistency with our brand is so important. The brand is so much more than a logo. It includes descriptive words, stories, as well as images that do include a logo that set an expectation for what our community is about. So consistent branding in all of our communications and marketing materials creates a strong identity. A strong identity increases the public's awareness of our services, but it also strengthens the public's confidence in the value of those services. So there will always be an opportunity for branding education, particularly with employees, so they understand why that consistency is so important. Our brand was developed through community consensus, and we've worked really hard to continue to build on that. Consensus can evaporate if it is not consistently reinforced. And branding implementation: we are well into the journey of implementing the visual aspects of the county's brand, but it is a long journey that we're still somewhat at the beginning of. It takes a lot of resources, and so we manage that responsibly as we are able to. We would love to be able to snap our fingers and have every sign within the county updated, every vehicle, fleet, decal updated, all apparel changed, but of course, that takes time and money, and so we recognize it will be a long process and are committed to managing that responsibly. In closing, I would just like to thank all of you and the management team for supporting public communications and the work we do. I think the true value of communications is often difficult to measure, and when you don't have a strong team and necessary resources, that lack is apparent. I'm very proud to say that's not the case here in Union County. I have a really strong team. I appreciate the work we do every single day and the work they do every day, and how much we've been able to accomplish in three years. So that being said, I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Good afternoon, everyone. Mr. Chairman, respected members of the board, Mr. Manager. I'd like to thank you all for allowing me to be here to present the Agricultural Services Update on behalf of our staff. It is a privilege to represent them at this meeting today. So first off, I'd like to talk about what our strategic objectives are, and we were very adamant that we wanted to make sure we listed two objectives because of the variety from our department. Number one is community consensus, and number two is economic development. Agricultural Services Department is extremely diverse. We operate multiple county facilities, and we operate multiple county programs within one service area department. And with that, our community consensus allows us to work individually and collectively with our Union County residents. It allows us to improve the general public perception of the county. We focus on agriculture. We focus on youth development. We focus on food and nutrition. We also focus on our facilities that we have. We also obviously have our farmers' markets. And then I wanted to make sure we touched on our economic development, because that is also additionally a major piece of our department, and I would be remiss if we didn't, again, include our facilities that we have. You guys are very aware of the rentals at the Ag Center and at the Simpson Event Center. Additionally, with the farmers' market and the growing local foods program that we have, that we're not only bringing money back into the county with our rentals, but we're additionally, and I would say even more importantly, putting money back into our local businesses and our local producers through our work there with that program. And then lastly, our Extension Education Program with our agricultural producers is very robust, as you'll see in some of the numbers that we're going to present here with the amount of economic impact that we bring into our community. And so we have a financial structure that I wanted to address with our agricultural services, with the programs, but I would encourage you to focus and look down towards the bottom of that slide on the operational structure. And this is how we focus on our day-to-day basis. So we have our Agriculture and Events Complex, which is our facility maintenance, and our rental program. We also have our Extension Education. That's our programs, our operations, the work that we do inside and outside of our facilities. And then lastly, our Local Foods Program, which includes multiple Union County farmers' markets, as well as the newly-launched UC Food Hub from this fall that focuses on wholesale and retail markets for our local producers and local businesses. So with our current investments, you will see I've highlighted a few of those. Our FTE counts do not include our nine full-time positions that are contracted with North Carolina State University and also North Carolina A&amp;T State University. And I want to make that known just because of the graphic with the full-time employment and the cost associated with that. So we have nine positions that the state additionally provides revenue to the county to support, and you'll see those at the bottom there with several hundred thousand dollars support for our staff salary and benefits. And then additionally, NC State and A&amp;T State also provide 13 regional positions that we don't pay anything for that support Union County. And lastly, our 2021 Extension statewide report came out, and I'm very proud to highlight that we have a 27 to 1 return on investment for the economics that county governments invest in our services. And I think that's very, very true here in Union County, and I think that shows the work that our staff does. And so when we look at measuring success, again, you'll see under the strategic objective where the community consensus and economic development come together. And I'd like to start with our facility occupancy, and you'll notice that through the COVID pandemic, our numbers did dip in percentage of usage. However, I wanted to put our updated FY22 actual numbers on there and not just our target, where you'll notice that we're already above 40% occupancy with our events and our space. And I would like to highlight, it's not just 40% on one facility. We've added an additional facility in this fiscal year. And so the month of April showed that we have an 89% overall total usage for our facilities. So you can see that this is continuing to increase and continuing to grow. Also with our educational space, we're at roughly 25% there. So our targets for both of those were 32% and 20%. So we're already over our target percentages for the year on occupancy and usage for our buildings. And then our direct contacts, and I want to be very clear and say that our direct contacts are not our facilities. Our direct contacts are 100% the Extension Education Programs that we do. So when you see 21,000 direct contacts, that is strictly the Extension staff, and that is educational programs in schools, that is field days, that is production meetings, that is youth activities, that is food and nutrition at Wingate University, at the Ag Center, at Dickerson Winchester, et cetera, et cetera, that we do. For the month of April, for perspective, we had over 4,000 attendees at our facilities. So 21,000 direct contacts for Extension for the FY22 year, 4,000 just for the month of April for our facilities. And so I just want to make sure those are clearly separated. And then on our economic development, our yield increase for agricultural producers. Our target for this year is $2.5 million of revenue that we bring into our agricultural producers, and I believe we're firmly on target to reach that, if not to succeed that, as we are already at 2.1. And I want you guys to understand the way that we calculate that is through direct contact with those producers. We do a lot of surveys. We do evaluations. These aren't numbers that we make up, and in all honesty, they're extremely conservative on the work we do. And also, the work that our staff put in for this increase of revenue is really compounding, because if we give a producer a piece of advice and they follow suit, they're not going to revert back the next year. So that increase in production, increase in yield, compounds annually from that point forward. So again, we feel very good about those numbers. If not, they are probably very much underrated. But we want to make sure that what we do present is very clear. So with our recent accomplishments, I would like to stress, I think the majority of our staff, including myself, were not necessarily around for all of FY19. Most of our staff are in their late 20s and early 30s. We have a very young, vibrant staff, a lot of energy. So we're not necessarily concerned about attrition and retirement. We're concerned about keeping those folks on with their brilliant minds and the quality work they do. But in 2019, we were proud to host Commissioner Steve Troxer for a two-day event at a production facility here in the county, as well as at Weddington High School, FFA. We were able to have all the FFA programs from all the high schools participate in that event. And we also created the We Grow Union County Newsletter that I believe all of you do receive on a monthly basis that highlights our work every single month. And then just under $50,000 collected in sponsorships, in-kind donations, and grants. For FY2020, we really worked hard to increase and expand our staffing model that we have. We initiated our Ag Technology Program with East Union Middle School that is seeing leaps and bounds of accomplishments and that I will touch on in a few minutes. We also formed partnerships with Wingate University for the Wingate Community Garden. That's right across the street from the post office, if you guys have been there. And we have college kids come out. We have internships. We have multiple elementary school classes. We have Wingate classes that come out and use that facility, as well as townsfolk. And then, again, just under $70,000 in those in-kind donations. And then we have FY21, and I would like to mention that this was during the pandemic year. So we were thankful to groundbreak at the SEC at Jesse Helms Park. We launched our local foods website, and you can continue to read on from there. Our staff worked very hard to partner with multiple county departments that year, and we hosted 14 different COVID vaccination clinics at the Ag Center where our Extension staff, our Agricultural Services staff, our Soil and Water staff, everyone at the Ag Center pitched in and worked together with Health and Human Services, with Emergency Services, to make those events successful. And then you'll continue to see our uptick in sponsorships and grants. And then FY22, so far, we did open an additional satellite location for the Union County's Farmers Market at Stallings Municipal Park. We had the grand opening for the Simpson Event Center, which has really kicked off with a bang as far as the usage and variety of activity at that facility. We did launch the UC Food Hub this past fall, and that is a budding operation that we have where we are providing locally grown fruits, vegetables, baked goods, meat, value-added products that go directly to local restaurants. So if you go into a restaurant in downtown Monroe today, you will majoritely find locally-sourced products that are from our producers in the county, and we're very proud of that. We also hosted the first-ever Wake Up to Agriculture Week with Union County Public Schools. Other than Thursday, where we were rained out and the day was canceled by the school system, we had just over 3,000 third graders that visited the Simpson Event Center and the Union County Ag Center for a wrap-up of their year-long studies on agriculture and how we wrote curriculum to put into their third-grade classrooms. And that was all classrooms from every school, every elementary school in the county. And then we had a significant grant this year with the North Carolina Department of Agriculture that really pushed our value-added dollars up for this fiscal year. So we always talk about how we really like to do big things at the Ag Center and the Agricultural Services Department, and the key initiatives that we have listed here are big things. And I know the goal was to list things that were going to be in 2023, but these are things that we're starting in '23. The Board of Education voted to create the Forest Hills Cluster Ag Technology Program, and I believe firmly that that was from the three years of success that we've had at East Union Middle School and the uptick of students interested in agriculture in that cluster. And so this year, we will be expanding into Union and Wingate Elementary Schools where we write the curriculum that goes to those students. We will also expand into East Union 6th, 7th, and 8th grade in the core curriculum areas. So far, we've just been involved in their agriculture classes, but now we will be incorporating agriculture into math, language arts, science, and social studies. We have a nutrition component for that as well, and we will be able to offer that in both English and Spanish to provide as much equity to all students that we possibly can. Our second initiative is our barn project, and this is a project we're working with Monroe Union County Economic Development on. We need and desire more resources for our local foods program. We have over 150% increase in new and beginning farmers in this county from the last We have over 150% increase in new and beginning farmers in this county from the last Ag Census that was done in 2018. And to accommodate those folks, we need facilities that can support them. We need places where they can sell their products, we need places where they can box, wash, ship their products. And we also need, need a place to support the food hub and the aging Union County Farmers Market. And then our last initiative is the continued development of Jesse Helms Park to support the Simpson Event Center. Several years ago, there was a, our department was clustered into community services and that partnership with Parks and Recreation, the library, Soil and Water, and Agricultural Services. And we still very much function and work in that manner, and I think you've heard that from Parks and Rec and the library system in their, in their budget workshop meetings. So if you see one of our staff, you're going to see the other staff. And so we want to continue to refocus our staffing for reduced setup and breakdown time so we can have more rentals, we can have more people in our facilities. And then we also are going to work on completing the design and build of a new maintenance facility that will function for both the SEC and the park. And then we want to continue our procurement of amenities for all rental opportunities and its many variety of rental opportunities we can have at the arena complex. So I have listed quite a few issues, challenges and opportunities, and you're happy to read through those. And as I mentioned before, one of the biggest issues we have is the age of agriculture, and it's really a paradigm of both, both, both extremes. We have aging traditional agricultural operation where the average farmer is 68 years old. In this county, we are very blessed to have very young, upcoming second, third, fourth, fifth generation producers to follow in their footsteps. While also, we have folks that are coming into our county that want to be involved in agriculture, they want to have a farm, they want to live sustainably, they want to, they want a homestead, et cetera, et cetera. We need to be able to provide resources for them. Our, our staffing is, is always a concern. As I mentioned, we have a very young staff, and I feel like for especially government work, it's extremely young. We have, with the exception of a few outliers, I think our average staff age is still in their twenties. They're very bright, they have multiple degrees, they're very active, they are very passionate about what they do. And, and keeping that, that staff is essential for the continued work that we do. So the challenges that we have are the extension awareness. We have a growing population, there's a plethora of things for, for people to do, for youth to do, for adults to do. Making sure that, we hear every day, I didn't know you guys existed. I had no idea. I wish I could have come here five years ago when I started this because this is the best thing that's ever happened to me with that set in. That's a big deal for us. We also have a challenge with the Union County Farmers Market, that's an aging facility, and it, and it needs to be, it needs to be updated. But we have multiple opportunities that we're very blessed in this county to have. And it all starts with our relationships and our partnerships. That is essential to what we do, whether it's as internal clients or external clients. We have a very bright municipal urban forestry program that works for the county, works with planning, and then works with many of our municipalities focusing on development and making sure that development is obtained sustainably and smart. We have a very strong agriculture base. Agriculture employs 18% of the county. We're the third largest agricultural producing county in the state. Over $500 million of cash receipts comes to this county because of agriculture, and we would be reminisced if we didn't remember that. And then our, our partnership with Union County Public Schools, we're very concerned and very passionate about the future of our youth, and we know that for our programs to succeed and for the benefit of our county to be, to be beneficial, it starts with our youth. And so we are in every second, third, fifth grade classroom. We will soon to be this year in every fourth grade classroom. And we have East Union Middle School, and then we're involved in every high school FFA program in the county. As we like to say in our office, we grow Union County, and I'm happy to take any questions that you have at this time.
Well, Andrew, I'm going to brag on you, I brag on all our staff, but it was a high bar, and I know there was a couple of extension chairmans after Jerry, but the only way I could be prouder of you if you were my son. You're very impressive. And to think how big Union County is and how close Mecklenburg is, you are truly, and I told you last week, you're almost like at the edge of the frontier, and you said, you know, it goes away from you. There is some farming on the western side, but... Last week in economic development, I brought up an idea with Chris Platte about ICT. I don't know if you remember ICT when you were in high school, you may be too young, but I know Jerry does. And, and I would encourage you, you know, they, they take their educational classes in the morning, and I know a lot of farmers would use these seniors and juniors, and they could go right into that business. So I'm very impressed by your presentation. I hear what you say about your young staff, they can get a lot done. I mean, not that older staff is slow, but them young ones can work all day and go back. You know, if you've been, you've done your job so good, if you have any needs, please convey it to Assistant Manager Nylan and have him run it up the flag. I appreciate all you and your staff does. Any other?
Thank you very much.
Bear with me, I'm trying to find the right presentation on this desktop, and I will succeed, but it may take me some time. There we go. All right.
That's that one over there. So in effect, he is costing us money because a cookie-eating lawyer.
I'm just waiting to see how he's going to respond to that. Well, good afternoon, Commissioners, thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the board, Mr. Manager. I've been asked to speak with you this afternoon about the Office of Legal Counsel with which you are all familiar at some level. I want to talk about what it is that we do when you don't see us from day to day. The, the main thing that we do is we represent a client. We have a single client that is the Union County organization. We don't represent staff or any particular staff, we don't represent functions or particular functions, we represent the organization. And of course, at the top of that organization is you all. You are the ultimate client that all of the lawyers in Union County have. And toward that end, I, I looked through all of our strategic objectives for the county. The one that I think probably most closely applies is organizational strengthening, but the reality is, what we do is try to help make everything else clip along in a legally compliant way. We try to reduce, not eliminate, risk. We do a lot of things behind the scenes. The main thing that happens in the process of our lawyering is that we read, we write, and we talk a lot. There are about 10,000 pages of agreements that get reviewed and approved annually, and somebody in our office reads every single page. These are not Page Turner novels, they require a good degree of focus and time. We, all of the ordinances that are passed in Union County, all of the resolutions, we do all of that work, and then before we do that, we have to read all of the case law and all of the statutes that pertain to that. So it winds up being a good bit of research and writing that's done. If you think about a lot of organizations that are not counties or government entities, lawyers will tend to specialize in things like mergers and acquisitions. Or a number of years ago, I worked for a laboratory testing company called LabCorp of America Testing Company, and they just focused on laboratory testing. Some lawyers will focus on criminal law, those sorts of things. In Union County, we have a number of things that we do that stretch a lawyer's capacity and frankly, make it fun and exciting for a lawyer to work in Union County. We deliver water through pipes, in the ground, into people's mouths. You think about the risks associated with that. I'm not even talking about building the infrastructure and the legal work that goes into producing that. I'm just talking about the raw stuff that we do. We treat wastewater in this county, we do hundreds of millions of dollars worth of financing, and those come with stacks of documents. We have, take 911 calls, we do healthcare, we do dental care, we have social services, we drive people around, we have libraries, parks, agriculture, we issue building permits. You think about the breadth of legal work that is conducted in this county, it's really astonishing. There aren't that many companies out there who do the kind of broad array of services that Union County does. Well, for each one of those things, a lawyer is generally consulted, and we provide advice about various forms of action that people would take. We don't decide those issues, those are decided by clients and proxies of clients down into the organization, but we provide all of that service every day, all year long. That's why I think we fit organizational strengthening probably the best. You can see a summary of some of those things that we do on this slide, I'm not going to go into them a lot, we've, we've discussed them a little bit already. To do that work, we have seven employees in the legal office, one of them is a legal secretary, and we have another vacant position in there that we're hiring for, functionally, it's me and four other attorneys, we've recently added some over in the social services area to help with that, I'll get to that later. But that is our, our, our small legal team. I wanted to say some things about probably the core thing that we do for the organization, which is review every single agreement that comes through here. It's a little over $500 million that is spent annually in this organization, and every single dollar goes out through a contract that has to be written, negotiated and executed, and sometimes litigated. In 2018, which is before I got here, we had about 450 contracts that came through annually that, in 2019, that actually went down a little bit, I came at the end of 2019, right around the time that COVID descended upon us. And you can see there, back in 2020 is both when COVID hit and when I began to really take over from my, my predecessor who had been in this role for quite a long time. Initially, we made some changes to the way we do policies, to the way we review agreements, some of the procedures that we go through. We approved DocuSign, and we did some initial process streamlining, excuse me, let me go back there. And, and we did some other things, but you see the total average review times began to come down, that was one of the things that I was asked to look at when I was first hired. You see the, the, the number of contracts are going up a little bit, the total review time is going down, the legal review time in particular is beginning to come down. And then we got into that in earnest in 2021 and implemented a new process in conjunction with a lot of other departments that worked very diligently and skillfully on revamping that process. And some of these numbers are not apples to apples because we began tracking more and, and measuring more, that was an important part of the effort. But you'll see in 2021, for example, before the new process implementations were put into place, you can see the total average review time across the organization was about 41 business days for an agreement. That has dropped from September the 7th, I believe in 2021 to today, that total organizational review time is down about 36%, which is dramatic, and the average legal review time has gone down about 49%. You'll see there that the legal piece of a document's review is actually fairly small. It's not a large piece, it's not all of the time, there are a lot of things that happen. Finance has a role, risk management has a role, IT has a role, procurement has a role. A number of different departments have roles in collecting, reviewing and making sure the agreements that ultimately get approved by you all are really in top shape and protect the county's interests. You all have seen where from time to time, we will get crosswise legally with a vendor or with somebody else out there in the community. Having those good, strong agreements in place is really what protects the county and ultimately the taxpayers' legal interest to make sure that those costs are no higher than they need to be. So in this process to achieve some of these results, we implemented a contract business owner, which is a single point of contact in the organization who has read and understands the agreement from a business standpoint, not just a legal standpoint. We created some template agreements for people to use that require a little bit less legal review. We started going through training and providing instructional resources to the entire organization. Somebody in my office designed a slideshow and then, and then went home and narrated it, I laugh every time I, I listen to it be played. But she went through that to provide that to the organization so they would understand a little bit more about how we review things. And then of course, we created some more ongoing metrics for the organization as a whole to be able to tell year over year, quarter over quarter, how things are proceeding through the organization. You think about this, whatever number of days you would want to pick, let's pick 26 number of, 26 review days, you multiply that by the number of agreements that come through the organization, you get a tremendous amount of time that is invested by the organization on a yearly basis to try to make sure that our agreements are, are in good shape. Some of our recent accomplishments that I'll go through, again, I wasn't here in 2019, so I skipped over that. The first thing that happened in 2020 is the former general counsel retired after 30 years in the role and is off enjoying retirement, and I came aboard. And, and for me, that's just a transition to a new job. For the staff, they had a, a new person and a new way of looking at things, and there were adjustments that they made, and this is really a credit to them to be able to be flexible and meet the demands of the day. And we really do have an outstanding legal staff. I've worked with a lot of lawyers in, in a lot of different places, and these folks are top-quality attorneys who are, they are, they're nice people, they are very good at their jobs, they pay a lot of attention, they are flexible, you can ask them to build a house and they will build it for you quickly in the form of an agreement, and then they'll tear it all down the next day when we decide to go in a different direction, and there's no hard feelings about it. They are amazing at representing this organization. When 2020 happened, we had a lot that came up for emergency management in response to COVID. There were executive orders, there were federal acts, there were different sources of money, there were ways the organization had to pivot, there were community interests that we had to respond to. And every time somebody would ask us a question, it was because they, they didn't have a ready answer and they wanted us to go find it, and we would do that. We did that for almost all of 2020 and then into 2021 as well. But in 2021, we started trying to digitize the legal office a little bit more. We have, if you've not had the privilege of visiting the third floor of this building, it's the old jail complex, there are whole wings of that that were dedicated to storing legal documents, which we are required to do under state law, and, and some, some of them we have to keep indefinitely. They have historical value, they can never be destroyed, they must be kept forever. We tried to digitize everything we could and make it not only have a smaller footprint on the third floor, but tried to get it in a searchable format so that people could be able to perform legal research or find the email from way back when, or the version of the contract that everybody forgot about a long time ago. And some of those contracts are really important. You think about the Catawba River Plant, that's been around for 30 years, that's, there's an enormous amount of history that's important in that document. When things come up, you got to be able to find it and locate it. So we digitized that and tried to produce a digitally searchable archive, and we're working with the State Department of Cultural Resources to try to reduce the amount of paper that we're hanging on to. And then in 2022, we went through that new contract review and approval procedure, that's actually when that was finalized, that had been underway for a while. And we also restructured our... And we also restructured our office to a little bit more of a portfolio and team system so that we have attorneys that are focused on different departments within the county to be able to have some increased efficiency in how we do our work, and some increased support for them so they have somebody who's a go-to person who can answer all of their questions. Everywhere from, we want a new policy on this, we want to answer a question from the community on that, we have a budget concern, whatever it may be. All of that is going to be more, more swiftly and skillfully supported through that restructuring. As we move into 2023, we have a few things that we have in our sights. One is updating and modernizing some of the existing policies and agreements that the county has, see if there are ways that we can make things more efficient, get rid of some bureaucracy, some red tape along the way, and also bring them maybe up to date, more current, the laws change every year, documents stay static by and large. We also are going to try to have some greater coordination with our Department of Social Services on legal matters. The court may be expanding its capacity to hear some of those cases from two days to three or maybe even four, which is gonna, I think it'd ultimately be a very good thing for the county. Right now, all of those services up until very recently are provided by outside counsel. We've begun trying to supplement some of those efforts and bring some greater coordination to the county, and that will continue. That's a thing we have never done before, so we're learning as we go on that. And then continuing to build out the department-focused portfolio service delivery model that I mentioned, each attorney has a specific part of the organization that they're responsible for, and, and that will grow and probably shift a little bit over time, even beyond 2023. But that's a key time for us to have that take root and be successful. Beyond that, I think the most important thing we can do is align our services with the needs of Union County. And whether that's via a department-focused model or some other model, it's our job, probably our most important job, to make sure we are aligned with the needs of our client organization. We want to continue to keep the cost of government low by identifying and reducing legal and financial risk. We are under no illusions that we're going to eliminate it, and at the end of the day, the course of action is decided by you all and your management team and other parts of the organization. We simply advise on ways that that legal risk can be reduced, realistically reduced. And then last, it, it helps us every time we can do it, and I preach this to the staff and try to do so myself, the more practical familiarity we have with the operations of county departments, the better we are at supporting them. We don't need to know how to do what they do, and we never will know how to do what they do. They're the experts in that. But when we can put it into context, we can help understand what the cold stack of papers in front of us is trying to accomplish in the county. It's not just a contract, it's a means to be able to accomplish something for the residents of Union County, and we try to keep that in focus each and every time. With that, I am finished with my presentation, be happy to entertain any questions that you have.
Any questions or comments? Well, thank you, Jason. I know when I ask you questions, you're expedient in getting them to me, and you break it down out of legal jargon to what I can understand. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we had a scheduled 10-minute break at 4:00, so let's go ahead and do it now because I imagine the next presentation would straddle 4:00. Is that okay with you gentlemen? Okay, we'll be back in here at 5:00 after 4:00. Do we need to vote? Do we need to vote on it? Okay.
... session and move on to soil and water.
Okay, Chairman Ray, Commissioners, Manager Watson, thank you for allowing me to come talk about the Soil and Water Conservation District. A little information about the district. We are governed by a Board of Supervisors, three elected, two appointed, Chairman Alan Balkum, Vice Chairman Wayne Moser, Secretary of Treasury Eddie Staton, members Adam Moore and Evan Hagler. We are also part of the first Soil and Water Conservation District in the nation, the Brown Creek Soil and Water Conservation District, which we broke apart with in the 60s when it became better used to go to a county structure. So, the Board of County Commissioners strategic objectives, the one that we most closely align to, sustainability. Again, we are a conservation organization, so clean water, healthy productive soil, less soil erosion, that is our main objectives for the Soil and Water Conservation District. We also have an education component with natural resource education, where we're teaching kids, teachers, and the public about conservation. So, the overview of our programs and services, we do natural resource BMP design and support, soil interpretive services, nutrient management plans, dry litter and sludge, slurry, liquid waste. We also do natural resource specific mapping, educational and technical trainings, soil and water consultative services, and we rent three no-till drills within Union County and outside of the county for a fee. The current investments for the Soil and Water Districts, we have three staff members, the director position, the education position, and the natural resource specialist position, which is a new position from 2021, so we appreciate that investment into the Soil and Water District. We receive $30,150 annually from the state Soil and Water Conservation through the Department of Agriculture. That's for time spent on state programs. So, that's for our natural resource specialist time spent on those programs. So, how do we measure success in the Soil and Water District? So, for our education department, classes and workshops held. So, our educator is teaching teachers, she's teaching residents of Union County and students through many different approaches. And we also look at the number of participants that attended. From the technical standpoint, we're looking at the number of creek miles cleaned. So, we started this in 2019 through a grant from the federal government, which I'll talk about in a little bit, but we actually got the stream cleaned in 2021. That was the start of the cleanup process. We did four creeks, Richardson Creek, 12 Mile Creek, two other creeks I can't think of right now. And for 2022, we are about to do the North Fork of Crooked Creek. It should get done by the end of June, so we're excited to see that creek cleaned. We also look at the number of projects funded. These are cost share projects, BMPs on the ground, being litter sheds, incinerators, composters, cropland conversion to trees or grass. These are projects that we cost share for farmers and residents of the county to, again, clean water, less soil erosion. And then, we're looking at the number of cost share applications. How many people are coming to our office and signing up for help? So, that has steadily increased over the years. So, we have exceeded the 15 that we had for our target for 2022. And what we are doing now with the new, in our natural resource conservation position, every application that we take, we are doing design on that. Even if we can't fund it, they're still getting a design and technical assistance. In the past, when I, as the director, was doing all of the cost share programs, we weren't doing that. So, they would come in and sign up for cost share, some need, but we weren't giving them the technical assistance and the design unless we had funded projects.
Could I stop you right there?
Sure.
What cost share programs are available in Union County now?
So, the programs that we are running through the Division of Soil and Water is the Ag Cost Share Program, the Ag Wrap Program, and the Community Conservation Program through CCAP. That's urban cost share. So, the Ag Cost Share-
What do those three actually do?
Okay, so the Ag Cost Share Program, cost shares on best management practices for litter sheds for poultry operations, incinerators for mortality, cover crops for highly erosive soils, cropland conversion. So, those are our programs for farmers through the Ag Cost Share Program, lagoon closures, lagoon cleanouts. So, that's the Ag Cost Share Program. The Ag Wrap Program is a water quantity program. So, we cost share on irrigation wells for produce operators. And we cost share on cleaning out ponds for ag producers. CCAP is for urban, is an urban cost share program for stream bank erosion and other community urban issues, rain gardens, rain barrels. We have a project right now where a backyard sloughing off into the South Fork of Crooked Creek. So, we're spending $25,000 to repair their yard. We get engineering work through the state, through the Soil and Water, Division of Soil and Water. So, that, the CCAP program historically has not been used in Union County. This is the first year we have got funding, and we've been putting in applications for six years every year that I've been here. But it's went to a regional application pool, so it's harder to get funds for that. But there's been an influx of money in the past year, so we ended up getting that project funded.
Do you still have some money available to people who wanted to clean up their ponds?
We don't right now. We get new funding in August, July, August, depending on when the Soil and Water Commission meeting allocates that funding.
Well, when you do, could you share that with our communications-
Sure.
-so they could let people know, because I'm sure there's a lot of small pond owners-
And it's for agriculture ponds only.
Oh, ag ponds.
Just ag ponds.
So, these would be irrigation and cattle water?
That's correct. So, we send out, and we can get up with public communications, we send out postcards every year to everybody on our list-
That's in the program.
Well, not that it's in the program. We got the list from the extensions list through the row crop, through their livestock, all the farmers that we can get a hold of, we send out postcards to-
Okay.
-through all of their resources.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, no problem. So, getting to that and some of our recent accomplishments, which we spoke to just a second ago, some of them. In 2019, we received 30, almost $40,000 through the EWP grant for stream debris removal due to Florence. We also received $8,400 from a disaster grant through the Division of Soil and Water for stream cleanup. In that same year, we received $151,000 of state cost share through the Ag Cost Share Program, the Ag Wrap Program. 2021, the Ag Center became an Eco Explorer hotspot. Our educator put that, sent out the application for that and made the Ag Center Eco Explorer hotspot where kids can come out, take pictures of plants, and do other activities, and come back and get prizes for the work they do. We also contracted three permanent conservation easements, two in Marshville, one in Monroe, on cropland, converted those to trees for repairing area. We also received $131,484 in state cost share. In 2021, we received the Natural Resource Conservationist Position, which, again, we appreciate. We're doing a lot more work because of that. And we also received county stream debris removal funding through our budget, and we appreciate that. Our educator was, became an environmental educator at North Carolina. She received that certification, which is a hard three-year program that we're excited, we were excited for her to get. We received $117,000 also in 2021 through, for state cost share. Accomplishments for this year, Project Explorer, we're working with Weddington for Wesley Chapel, sorry, Elementary School on a Project Explorer program. That's our first program our educators working with, taking kids outside, doing citizen science. We have an outdoor learning garden that we're in the process of building at New Salem Elementary School. We're putting the pollinator plants in this week, working with our educator and myself, putting that together. And then, through those three programs we've been talking about, we received $146,000. So, key initiatives, as always, we're going to try to leverage more funding for those three core programs plus EWP through our federal and state partners. We're also going to try to get more school participation in the Project Explorer program, and then develop more conservation plans and BMP designs. So, issues and challenges, opportunities that we're facing, the Department of Public Instruction is looking at changing the K through 12 science standards. So, we'll be redoing some of our programs to meet those standards. But, an opportunity is they are going to be taking input from the environmental educators in North Carolina, which our educator sits on the board for, so she can help make decisions on those new standards. Issues and challenges, again, urban stream bank erosion and stream blockages, that's something we're going to continue to get, especially now that we have, the Emerald Ash Bore has came in the county, which is an insect affecting ash trees, which most of the ash in the county are in stream, are in flood plains. So, we're seeing a lot of mortality in that specific species, and they're going to start causing issues with stream blockages. But, we're going to try to increase grants for that program. There's a new program that just came out, it's called the STRAP Program. It's for stream debris removal. We did a needs assessment for the Division of Soil and Water for the Union County. We put in a need of $1.3 million for debris removal, was the needs request we put in, and it looks like we're going to get somewhere between $300 and $350,000 in the next few months for stream debris removal. So, we're really excited about that. I just heard back Friday on that. Okay, is there any other questions regarding the Soil and Water?
How far down the food chain do you go on stream rehabilitation?
As in?
Well, I know a lot of streams that will backwater up, but they're not named. If we have heavy rainfall, they-
Sure. We'll go down as long as it's a ephemeral drain. So, it doesn't have to be a name stream, the blue line stream. We can look at anything. So, if there's any issues you have, or know of anybody that has-
I don't have one.
Yeah, if you know of anybody that has issues.
I think there's probably a lot of cattle farmers that probably have land that will go underwater because below them, it's blocked.
Yes, yep. And if any of y'all here have any blockages in creeks, let us know. We're putting a ranking sheet together for any creeks that we are going to try to clean up, because we can't go look at every creek. We don't know every problem. So, we, you know, have the citizens of Union County let us know when there's an issue.
Well, you know, there's a lot of land that have small streams that they're not farmed, they're not timbered, and stuff falls in them and they get blocked.
Mm-hmm, yeah. And with that ash bore, it's going to be a lot more. Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Chairman Ray, members of the board, I really appreciate being here to represent our members of our solid waste team, to share with you a little bit about our solid waste program and some of the successes and challenges that we face moving forward. I would like to, before we get started with the presentation, recognize those staff. We have some extremely hardworking staff in our solid waste program, and as you know, many of you go to many of our facilities. They're out on the asphalt in the heat of summer storms, really doesn't matter, the guys who operate the equipment, transfer station, all the way to our business office representative here with Lindsay and Zach, who are here to make sure that I communicate the right information to you. We really appreciate the work that they do, and I just wanted to state that publicly for your benefit and for theirs as well. With regard to our vision statement and how we support the board's objectives, there were two areas. And I saw Cooperative Extension shared two of the areas that they emphasize, and we too feel like we publicly impact a couple of areas, one being public safety, something that many people don't think about with regard to solid waste. But, through proper management of our various waste streams, we protect the health and safety of our community. By limiting potential groundwater contamination, methane generation at our landfill facility and our transfer station operations, we protect the environment against potential health and environmental hazards to the public. And you only need to look around the state of North Carolina to see some of the issues that solid waste departments deal with when it comes to these type of potential hazards and issues. We are very fortunate in Union County to have staff that stay on top of these issues and protect the public's health and safety. Also, from a sustainability standpoint, we provide convenient and cost-effective means of disposing of both commercial and residential waste. Our satellite residential waste and recycling centers are strategically located around the county, making them very convenient for our residents to dispose of their materials. As well, having a county-owned CND landfill, which is unusual in North Carolina, and an MSW transfer station reduces transportation costs to many of our commercial haulers, which in turn subsequently lowers the cost to our business community. So, that sustainability of our community is very important, not to mention our recycling program that speaks to the sustainability of those assets as An overview of our program, we broke this down into two basic fundamental elements of solid waste, one being disposal, the other being collections. Our disposal program is basically made up of our CND, which is our construction demolition landfill operations, our municipal solid waste, or MSW. I've learned to speak trash as I've gotten more familiar with our solid waste program, so I try to spell these out for you, as well as our recycle, recycling disposable services through various vendor contracts, be that on-the-road tires, electronics, white goods, waste oil, glass, metal, and other sorted items. And then, the collections portion of our program, which is really represented by the functions of our central collection site at Austin Chaney, as well as our five satellite locations at Parkwood, Piedmont, Gold Mine Road, White Store, and Armfield. Now, what I will share with you is that our Austin Chaney site collects a broader array of materials, CND material, MSW material, yard waste, electronics, all the recyclable materials, where our satellites, satellite sites accept just basic MSW, some used oil, mixed paper and cardboard, and plastics, metal, and glass, those type of recyclable projects, products. So, our Austin Chaney program is much larger by far. And then, also to share with you another collection program we do once a year is our Household Hazardous Waste. If you hear the term HHW, that's what that stands for. We do that once a year. Unfortunately, during the pandemic, we were unable to do that for the community for two years, but we are working on a schedule for a Household Hazardous Waste Day on September the 24th, and we're working with Monroe Crossing Mall to be the site of that location, a little more centrally located and a little more exposure for that program. So, go ahead and put that on your calendar, save the date for September 24th. Our current investments in the program, and I will share with you, and you are already aware of this, is that solid waste is completely a fee-based program. There are no tax dollars that go into the program. It is very much a business of Union County. The current investments that we have equate to 24 full-time staff, 17 part-time staff, with part-time staff providing the bulk of the workforce for our collection side of things. Our full-time and part-time numbers that you see here on the screen are listed as FTEs. So, you may ask, why is, why are we at 24.25 and 7.63? Those are FTEs, and we do have some additional contributions of staffing time for a little bit of Brian's time, a little bit of Lindsay's time, Zach's time, and that gets added into the equation as indirect cost. The total cost includes enterprise charges for Union Water Business Support, indirect costs for office space as well, utilities, those type of things that support the solid waste program. We'll share with you very quickly that the bulk of our revenue and expenses come from disposal services, and that's CND and MSW. Those are our money makers within the solid waste program. The Austin Chaney RWRC site accounts for more revenue than the other five collection sites combined. In large part, that's because of the breadth of the material that they accept there and the amount of people who utilize Austin Chaney, because they can accept so many different materials. Measuring success, we have four performance measures that I want to share with you today. The first one involves our yard waste program. Yard waste tonnage fluctuates, you'll notice from year to year. As we see in 19, it was 478 tons. It went up during 20, and it's really funny. You can tell kind of what's going on in the community by the waste stream that we see. And we noticed at the start of the pandemic, when people were secluded in their homes or isolated in their homes, a lot of yard work got done. We saw a lot of mature shrubbery and other materials that were brought to Austin Chaney as part of our yard waste collection program, that people may have been at home, but they were still busy getting chores done out in the yard. So, we saw a significant increase in FY '20, and those numbers have somewhat stabilized into a normal range. One of the other contributing factors for our yard waste program, you'll notice from year to year, if we have a hurricane season, a particularly strong hurricane season with debris, that debris, when it is collected, is taken to the landfill. Much of that is yard waste, trees, limbs, those type of things. That program can fluctuate dramatically based on natural events that occur. Our CND program, CND, as you can see there, has grown exponentially. That is a program we're seeing tonnage increases, dramatic tonnage increases, which is a cause for our permitting request through NCDQ to move forward with an expansion of our existing CND landfill. We were at a point where we, probably five years ago, thought we had 12, 15 years left on that landfill. In the course of two or three years, the life expectancy on that landfill decreased quickly. So, we appreciate the support that each one of you have given to that effort to move to DEQ, because that is a critical part of our finances for solid waste. Also, you'll notice in the MSW line, we measure our MSW material that's taken out of the transfer station, is sent to a landfill over in Anson County. You look at those numbers, we are increasing significantly in our MSW program. That's the growth of Union County being represented there. Where we were at 8,000, a little over 8,000 in FY ' '19, we're now over 12,000 tons. So, this is a significant increase in our program. Again, a money maker for us that helps subsidize some of the other things that don't generate revenue for the solid waste enterprise fund. And then, finally, our recycling program, you'll notice the revenue in there is relatively stable. The challenge of our recycling program is that the end market for recycling is not where it used to be. So, there are challenges with getting things and keeping things in the recycling stream, because for haulers, it can be less expensive for them to declare contaminated material and send it to the transfer station or to another location, rather than have to pay the fees for disposal for recyclable material. Our, excuse, yes, sir?
So, every year, that number's going up, and then it's going down in '22. Is that what you're seeing?
For?
So, it goes from 654 to 675. So it goes from 654 to 675 to 725, 882, and then 725 again.
And we're projecting it to flatten out this year, the same as last year, not seeing significant increase or decrease. It's a relatively flat program.
Okay.
So it's steady. And these 22 targets or projections for the end of the year based on current information that we have.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. We have seen the slight increase in our revenue for our RWRC sites. However, labor costs associated, if you remember, a couple of years ago, we added additional staff due to safety concerns. Most of our remote RWRC sites were staffed with single individuals. We increased that staffing to provide a level of safety in addition to the fact that we were collecting funds. So those costs have added to, or taken away, I guess, from the financial picture of those locations. We'll address that a little bit later in the presentation. I love to talk about accomplishments, and as we look back at 2019, one of the first accomplishments when we went over to solid waste and was one of my programs was the Gold Mine Road Residential Waste and Recycling Center opening. If you remember, we had to leave the Sun Valley site because of expansions to the school, and the decision was made to utilize space that was available at our Public Works Operations Center. That was, we think, a huge success. It got off to a little bit of a rocky start, Mark, just a little bit, just a little bit. But it turned out really, really well in spite of that, and we consider that our crowning achievement for 2019. But as you notice, we go into 2020. We initiated support of our litter busters program, which y'all have supported very well in addition. We've allocated staff from our solid waste program to help with litter management along Austin Chaney and Olive Branch roads. And if you drive down those roads now as opposed to driving down a few years ago, they are much cleaner, much more slightly. We also instituted with your support the cover-your-load program, which has helped as well with litter management. We also were able to repurpose some brick material that was obtained from the old Cooper Tools demolition that took place, and we were able to construct a new CND haul road on our CND landfill site, saved us over $50,000 in gravel cost and rock cost in order to be able to access another portion of our CND landfill. So that was a huge cost savings for solid waste. And then in 2021, we purchased a new 826K compactor. And I think for most of you who were able to go out to the landfill, was it last year? I think we entertained a few of y'all out there last year to ride some of the equipment and see the operation. That is a big piece of equipment. And the reason that equipment is so important is because the weight of it allows us to compact the landfill, the CND material that arrives, to a point where it saves 20% or achieves 20% more compaction of that landfill, which extends the life of the landfill, which is extremely important for our program. We also initiated a long-term planning and received approval from this board for our CND landfill expansion. That is an arduous process. There aren't many of those being approved by NCDQ, and we're one of the few. And we're excited about it, and I hope y'all are as well. We also received approval from this board for initiating planning and design of the new Austin Chaney site. For those of you who regularly attend Austin Chaney to get rid of material, you know it is not the best location. It's very dusty. It's a little bit of a challenge for some of our customers to lift some of the material that they bring to the site over the canisters, to get them into the containers. That site is going to be cutting-edge for our residents, and we anticipate is going to speed up the process and hopefully reduce the queuing that takes place on Austin Chaney Road and sometimes backing up even to Olive Branch Road as well. One of the ways that we're going to do that is it allows us to get the commercial haulers out of the line with our residential haulers, which should speed that process up, and I think our residents are going to be very pleased with that. We also assisted a number of our municipalities with their curbside collection RFPs. The reason that's important is because if we can encourage them to bring their material permit, hopefully, you know, I'll probably say this again in just a minute, hopefully by the end of this calendar year, which then allows us to start construction and preparation for a 30-year expansion to our current CND landfill. And that is a big deal for Union County. We also have completed construction plans for our new Austin Chaney site. That'll be going out for bid here in the near future. We awarded a new surplus yard waste contract with the Garden Scapes. If y'all remember, a few months ago, you approved that. That allows us to sell our mulch products and reduces our program costs, so we're not maintaining that material constantly, as well as free up space for the new Austin Chaney site as we move forward with construction on that location. Key initiatives. The first is secure the state CND landfill expansion permit. That is critical to our program, critical to our continued CND waste acceptance. We anticipate that permit again by the end of this calendar year and allow us to continue our CND tonnage growth. And just as a note, we made a presentation to the board probably two years ago and talked about, shared with you, what the environment is in this region for CND landfills and landfills in general. Many of the landfills in this region have very limited life expectancy. In the next 10 years, we are going to be in a very good position with regard to our CND landfill and moving forward. So I just wanted to share that with you. Second key initiative is completing our MSW transfer station improvements with the addition of some new scales that we have already ordered, some structural enhancements. That transfer station was built in the 1980s, and it's time for us to show a little love to it, put some money back into it. In addition to that, we're also looking at possible expansion of that transfer station based on the amount of material that we're seeing right now and the way the trend is moving in terms of MSW material. Our key initiative number three is complete construction of the Austin Chaney RWRC site and open the facility up by sometime in, hopefully, the third quarter of FY '23, improving service and efficiency of that operation. And then our initiative number four, which is one that I don't know that we have shared with you before, but one that we have been in talks with Union County Water, of working with their bio-solid program, some presentations they have shared with the board before about the expense associated with transporting and disposing of bio solids. We are looking at joining them with our yard waste mulch program and using that to, with the bio solids that they produce as part of their sewer treatment process, to possibly take care of both of those materials simultaneously in a composting program. So we're looking at that, to continue that dialogue with Union County Water as well. Future issues and challenges, this is where the rubber meets the road. We've got to look at ways that we can implement a method to address our costs associated with our RWRC satellite sites. On average, we lose about $500,000 per year in those programs. We've got to figure out a way to close that gap to help our solid waste fund stay sustainable. We've got to look at a funding stream to help produce a household hazardous waste program that is not just once a year. For those of you who have fertilizer at your house or medications that have expired or solvents or things of that nature that we don't get rid of at any of our sites, that is a tremendously important program to make sure that people are disposing of those type of materials safely. So we'd like to see that program expanded to more than just a once-a-year event. In addition to that, looking at a roadside litter management effort. It's one thing for us to go out and collect litter every day along certain roadside. It's another thing to have a comprehensive management program for litter. We are looking at those issues right now with regard to a rate study being conducted by MSW associates. They will be bringing recommendations back to the board in the form of a presentation. So we look forward to that and for your consideration. We also need to determine a commercial MSW tipping fee. I'll call it an adjustment. It's an increase. We are right now participating in a very favorable contract for our transportation disposition of MSW material at our transfer station. That is scheduled to expire in 2024. When that happens, we anticipate a significant increase in those costs. That has been very favorable for Union County for several years, and in preparation for that, we're looking at some incremental increases in those fees to haulers to account for it so that we don't have a shock and awe when we have to make those adjustments to cover the costs associated with new contract. So that's important for us to determine what those incremental increases are going to be. We need to assess the need for an expansion to the existing transfer station. That is part of our capital improvement program for solid waste. At the rate we're going right now, we are starting to push against our permitted limit for our existing transfer station. We're confident that we can get that limit increased, and we can certainly maintain the tonnage increases that are coming our way. But by the time we reach the 25, 26 timeframe, we're anticipating that we're going to need to evaluate the capacity of that facility and whether an expansion is required. So we have it included in our capital improvement plan. And then finally, the construction of a solid waste operations center. Right now, we have staff that are on the fifth floor of this building. We've got operational staff that are located out at the landfill in Austin Chaney site. Logistically, that makes it very difficult for the program because one of the ladies who is up on the fifth floor here manages our recycling program. Well, those recycling efforts in large part are out at the Austin Chaney site, so it makes it a challenge for her to be able to work with those programs out there. If you, and y'all have been to the site, you've seen the block building that's out there right now. It's not the greatest location for office, much less locker facilities, changing areas, break room areas, those kind of things. So that's a key focus for as well, is make sure that we get that taken care of, and that also is part of our capital improvement plan. And I think that is all that I have for you today, and we'd love to answer any questions if we can.
Commissioner Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Jeff, for your presentation. Just one question. Do you have anything you can share yet in terms of a timeline for addressing the operating losses for the satellite sites?
Well, I don't want to be premature in the information that we share because we are still working with MSW consultants on the data, and we want to make sure this is very data-driven. They have posed a few recommendations to us at first. The timing is probably not right right now to get into that. We want to make sure that we have our facts together, we have all the information, and we give you the materials that you need in order to be able to communicate that. I think it's a combination of things that we've got to look at, certainly our CND and our MSW tipping fees. But as we look at how those transfers, the satellite sites work, recognizing the programs that they administer, especially on the recycling side, that is not a revenue generator. The end market is just not there, and recyclers are just not buying the materials that they used to buy. So I think if you'll give us a little bit more time, we'll be able to get that information pulled together and have a formal presentation for you. And there are some options, I will say that.
We look forward to another presentation.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Vice Chairman Williams, I can tell you from previous experience, it's like a booby trap, though you think you're on to something, and then the citizens come up in arms, and it's like, whose idea was this anyway?
We get a lot of input from citizens on-site. Yes, sir.
Commissioner Rushen.
What's the total operating cost of those satellites?
I have to defer to this group. I think we're at six. I think that may have been in there. It's a little shy of that number, I believe, because there's some other elements that are built in there. But we're in the, what range?
It's around $600,000, or just for both sites?
I was going to say 650, or somewhere in that range.
So say it again.
Around $650,000, 675, I believe.
$650,000 to operate the sites? And the, and it generates how much revenue?
I'll have to get that information.
$725,000?
I'll have to get that information for you.
Don't, I want to point out something, Commissioner Rushen. I don't know that they're including the costs that go into all the transfer. There's a lot of other costs to go into those recycling sites. The reason why they're saying it's a half a million dollar loss is because we still have to transport all the waste that goes back and forth from there to the transfer station, and those costs are not always built into the recycling sites because we're talking about staff and what it takes for those sites, not necessarily all those transportation costs. So when they say it's a half a million dollar loss, it's because of all that transportation, of that waste back and forth. That's really where it comes from. We'll get you the specifics, unfortunately, if they don't have it in this level of detail, but we'll get you the specifics.
Thank you.
Commissioner Simpson.
Jeff, for the benefit of the Western side, do we have any current formal relationship with the Foxhole?
Union County has an agreement with the Foxhole. If a member of Union County wishes to use that facility, they've actually gone up on the rates. It was $50 a year that would have to be paid, I believe. They may be at 75 now. Then a Union County resident can pay that fee. It basically equates to the charge that Mecklenburg residents pay as part of their fee, and then a Union County resident would get a sticker and then in turn be able to use that site. They do have limitations in terms of quantity of material that you can bring that's posted at the site and on their website. It'll tell you how many bags they'll accept for that membership, essentially being a member of the Mecklenburg solid waste program. But yes, we do have an agreement with Mecklenburg.
And is that sticker available there at the Foxhole? Is that how you go about getting one?
Honestly, Commissioner Simpson, I don't know if, how they operate that, if it comes mailed out of their office, or they can actually produce that on-site, but we can find that and get that information.
Jeff, is that a one-year sticker?
Yes, sir.
So for $75, they get to take so many bags a week?
Yes, sir. And then they charge a fee for anything above the limited product amounts that someone may bring. So if they have a five-bag limitation for household trash, and you bring in seven, then you pay the additional two, pay the fee for the additional two bags.
Okay, thank you very much.
Good afternoon, Chairman Ray. Commissioners, management team, as Michelle mentioned before, you have in front of you our first quarterly CRP report that we want to start providing to the board on a quarterly basis. We spend lots of time talking about our capital improvement plans. We spend a lot of time talking about master planning, and we spend a lot of time talking about financing of our capital programs. After all that takes place and you actually adopt our capital project ordinances, sometimes we forget what happens after that for all of our CRP projects. So we wanted to provide this report to you in order to increase our transparency efforts for the county and also to our citizens. So you have this report printed for you. It's about 54 pages. I don't plan to go through every single page, or we would be here for a long time. But the contents of this report includes a program summary for each of our major funds as well as the major projects within each one of those funds. You have a separate sheet on each major project that we will look at, a sample of that, and as well as behind the program summary, you have a report that shows each individual project within that CRP fund to show you what has been appropriated today, what has been spent today, what's encumbered, and what's actually available. So to begin with, to remind you, the four CRP funds that we have in the county that we operate is our general fund for CRP, which includes our county facilities as well as South Peemaw Community College. We also operate the Public Works Water and Sewer Capital Project Fund, Solid Waste Fund, and we also have a Union County Public Schools Capital Fund that we provide operating capital money to them annually, as well as any Union County Public Schools fund projects are tracked through that fund as well. So to begin with, for our general CRP fund, this is the program summary report. This is as of our financial records, as of This is as of our financial records as of March 31st, 2022. As you can see, each individual program is rolled up into a summary for the revised budget, what we have spent to date, what is encumbered for contractual commitments and/or purchase orders that our departments have entered into, and what the available unspent funding is for each one of those programs. Behind that program summary is the project detail sheet. This lists each individual project in the general CIP fund that's been appropriated. Instead of rolling it up by the program, you can see it individually here. So our total appropriated to date as of March 31st for the general CIP fund was $228 million. Of that, we have expended $153 million. We have contractual encumbrances of around $23 million and available budget of $51 million. I want to remind you that this is a multi-year capital project budget, so this is any projects that you have appropriated from the beginning of time until March 31st that have not been completely completed, constructed, and closed out. These are the major projects that we've pulled out to show you on a quarterly basis what, how we are progressing on each one of those. The major projects for CIP for general capital that we pulled out is the Board of Elections renovation, Kane Creek Camp Store, the Emergency Services Complex, the Historic Courthouse renovations Phase Two, the jail block renovations, jail door control and cell locks upgrade, our Union County Progress Building, our Radio Shop renovation, the Southwest Union Library, and the Union County Sheriff's Office renovation and expansion project. For each one of these major projects, we've created a slide for each one of those to show you where are we at in the progress, what phase are we in. And I'm just going to use this one as an example. This is the Board of Elections renovation project. As you are aware, we are in the construction phase. Each one of these programs, project sheets will give you the scope of the project, which is what you have adopted for the scope of that project, for what it will be used for. The current funding detailed list appropriated to date, your expended to date encumbrances and available budget. The project detail information tells you which project, I mean, excuse me, which department in the county is responsible for this CIP project, the location of the project, and the facility's project manager, if one is in existing. We are also listing out the individual funding sources. So many times we get questions from the management team or from other staff members is how did we pay for these projects? And this lists out the individual funding sources in total. And then for the activity, we've listed out the estimated start date, end date, and the estimated completion date for construction, for when the project would actually be completed, and the cost for each one of those individual phases. Is there any questions before I move on to the next section? Moving forward, we'll go to the water and sewer portion. I'm not going to spend a lot of time going over an individual project for them because you've been presented capital project updates from John Schutak and the engineering staff. Again, you have your program summary for the Public Works CIP fund. We've appropriated to date about $590 million, expended to date $295 million, and we have encumbrances left of 240 with available budget to spend of $54 million with, if you look at the summary of these individual programs, of course, the majority of that is related to the Yadkin River Water Supply Project. Then you have your individual project sheet as well for Public Works. And moving along, these are the major capital projects that we have pulled out. Again, I'm not going to spend a lot of time going through each one of these. You will have a workshop this week for water and sewer, and you'll be spending more time in detail talking about their capital projects. Moving forward, we'll go to the solid waste fund. So they only have one program for solid waste. Jeff touched on this a little bit before, and the two major projects that they only have, we've newly created this CIP fund in the past couple of years. Prior to that, they didn't actually have a CIP fund where we tracked capital projects. Their two major projects are the Austin-Cheney site redesign and the C and D cell expansion that Jeff mentioned earlier in his presentation. And moving forward is the program summary for Union County Public Schools. As you all are aware, we provide annual operating capital funding to them. Their program summary is by the year that we have actually provided funding to them with the exception of the bond projects, they are in a separate program and restricted. And then you have a list of each of the categories by year, which is how you actually adopt. Union County Public Schools funding is in their categories by capital project ordinance annually. And in total, we have appropriated $143 million. They have expended to date $102 million, and they have an available budget of $40 million. And just to remind you how our process works for Union County Public Schools projects, we reimburse them once they actually make their capital project expenditures. We are not paying them upfront for that money, and we also do not have any encumbrances on our books that they may have already have contractual commitments in place for. We have been in conversations with Union County Public School staff and their finance staff to try to get a better understanding of what their actual outstanding contractual commitments are to determine what their true available budget is. And this slide here is just an illustration of what is the percentage of revised budget expended to date encumbrances and available funding for each one of our funds. And with that, I would like to open discussion and ask for any recommendations for anything else you may want to see going forward on a quarterly basis, or any questions you may
I'm sorry. Commissioner Rushin.
We were hearing recently about 32 million available for the school system that they haven't spent yet, but that's actually 40?
So this is a quarterly report as of March 31st.
Okay.
So if we were to fast forward to today, then that number would be less based on what expenditures they've turned in from March 31st through the beginning of May.
So it gets closer to 32?
Right.
Okay. Now, and I look at the county, though, since so much has been made of this, and we have 51 million?
As of the end of March, yes, that's correct.
So the schools have about 32, and the county has maybe 40-something? Because we, I'm sure we've spent some money.
Right.
That sound correct?
Probably around, I would have to pull an up-to-date report to determine that, but yes. And this includes all of our bond projects as well that are ongoing, that have been funded, as well as the South Peacock Community College bond projects as well, any outstanding balances on those.
Yeah, some, just stuff like something might have happened during COVID that we weren't able to finish, materials becoming available, things like that.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
And I would like to thank our facilities team, Chris Boyd and his staff, as well as our water and sewer team, John Schutak and engineers, as well as my senior accountant, Avery Carruko, for the time and energy that they put into building this report. There is a lot of staff time that went into it, so we are hopeful that you take this information and it is useful to you all.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Williams.
This is some fantastic data, and I appreciate the work that y'all have done. Will it be available on our website?
We can put it on our website, yes.
Okay, then, because this is true transparency.
I agree.
Did you come up with those graphics?
For each one of those program, I mean, projects.
That's nice, the way you put that together with the
Thank you.
Timeline and the funding, that's easy to understand and set up well.
Thank you.
Whoever did that.
It's a group effort. Our, our senior accountant did a great job working on this project. She did spend a lot of detail putting this together. Any other questions?
Thank you, Beverly.
Chairman Wade, members of the county commission, I'm, I'm pleased to be with you today to share some information regarding the FY '22 third quarter revenue and expense projection for Union County. I want to start by saying that, that not, not much significant has changed since we discussed this information a few months back, the mid-year projection. So it's really a review, a brief review of what we, what we discussed then, and with a few updates in a few areas that have, have, have had some changes, or have really continued in the, in the trajectory that we discussed then. To begin with, I'd like to talk about revenues as a whole. You'll see the table at the top of this slide shows all general fund revenues. And again, if you remember back to the adopted budget, the general fund was consolidated to include general fund activities with county services, also schools, debt service, and so on and so forth. So the numbers you'll see are bigger than when we looked at this last year because they're, they've all been combined. Ad valorem taxes, collections are trending at about 100.7% collection at year-end. In the past few years, we've been about, sometimes we've been 99.6% collections, 90, 99.2%, and it looks like this year we're going to be just a touch above 100% collections. Sales tax collections.
Real quick, how does that?
Sure.
How do we get 100%?
Sure. The, when we budget, when we prepare the estimate for ad valorem collections, we budget a percentage of non-collections or late collections that would go into the next fiscal year, and that's listed in the statute that, that you should do that as a matter of, of yeah.
And a lot of times, when that property would sell, the back taxes would have to be cleared.
Yeah, exactly.
It's not like you send an extra $100.
Hey, that's.
It also includes the amount that we collect on automobiles.
Yep.
And there's been a significant increase in the sales tax and whatnot that's been, and ad valorem tax that's been collected on automobiles, and that's reflected in these numbers also.
Yeah. And there's a slide here that'll drill, drill down on that a little bit more, so we can go into that more if you'd like to. Sales tax, each time we've spoken, really for the past year and a half, sales tax has been, has exceeding projections, and that continues this year. My projection for the end of FY '22 is that we would collect about eight, eight and a half million above the adopted budget, which represents about 15.3%. For context, the state budget is projecting about 15% increase, I'm sorry, collections above budget for their revenues in general also. Every county, every city around the state is experiencing the same thing, and again, it's a product of, of things we've discussed before also. Other taxes is registered deeds, real property transfer collections. They're projected to collect above budget by about $1 million or 16% or so. Intergovernmental revenue is going to be close to budget, trending about 98.5% collections as a group, and that's all the revenue we receive from the federal government, state government, restricted and unrestricted. One thing I want to point out there, the sub-bullet is, within those revenues, there's, there's one called the state Medicaid Hold Harmless Payment. That's a, that, we get that as a result of a swap the state did with counties over 20 years ago. They took back a portion of the sales tax and also a responsibility for the non-administrative Medicaid administration throughout the state. And so that's tied very closely with the sales tax numbers statewide. So as the sales tax numbers increase or decrease, that revenue reacts accordingly. So, you know, we're in a period of, of sales tax growth, and that's, that, that revenue is also going to reflect growth as well, so I want to mention that to you. As far as non-enterprise charges for service, that's a building code revenue that's currently trending about $1 million and a half dollars above the adopted budget, and that, again, reflects the local construction market, and that's a restricted revenue, so that doesn't benefit the general, the county, the general fund as a whole. That has to be directed only towards building code efforts and initiatives. Our investment revenue, again, we're in uncertain times and economic conditions. The conservative expectation for this year is that we would collect about $350,000 on, against a budget of 1.2 million, so that'll, that's one area where we're going to come in under the budget. Other revenue, that's, the vast majority of that section is the rental payments we receive from Atrium, the hospital, that's 6.3 million, and we're going to collect, we'll definitely collect that, and it should be right, right there with that, that category. I want to just remind you that in the FY '22 adopted budget, we adopted, right here, 20, 28.5 million in appropriated fund balance, or we built, we built this year's adopted budget planning on using that much fund balance for, to maintain operations, and also, that's, includes debt service also. And the last line, the last bullet breaks that out as how that was planned to spend or what the items were that we, we used that for. 2.4 million for business incentive grants, 8.5 million for, for debt, for the debt service fund, 3.9 million for the budget roll, and other one-time expenses, 10.8 million in Pago, and then 3 million to fund OPEB in FY '22. This slide gives a little more detail on the ad valorem. Again, just showing that we've, we're going to trend a bit above the adopted budget. Collections through March 31st represent about, that show that we had collected about 98.6% of the budget at that point compared to the previous year when it was closer to 95, so just showing that we're farther along at that point in the year. Again, as County Manager Watson said, the motor vehicle collections is influencing this as well as the, we know the inflation account nationwide, vehicles is increasing their value, and also as families move into the county, they bring with them one car, two cars, three cars, and that increases that number as well. Then the sales tax, again, sales tax is trending about 15% above the FY '22 budget, and that, I'm estimating that'll result in about between eight and eight and a half million dollars. We had this discussion after the mid-year. My estimate there was between six and seven and a half million, so the, the trend of growth has continued over the, the past quarter. Again, this includes proceeds from online sales and market shifts from the pandemic and more online purchases that we've, you know, we've gone through that. And we know that we're, we're in a period of inflation, 8.3% was most recently communicated, and as the price of goods and, of goods sold increases, so does the sales tax attached to it increases as well, has an increasing effect.
Mr. Chairman. Nice question, please.
Sure.
Blake, with some of these increases above your, your plan, we, we, this past year, we've gone through an incredible housing market, and you did reference people moving in. But with the sale of homes and, and everything there, that, that could throw your, that could throw your numbers off, too. Do you have any idea how much of the homes, new home purchases that have gone on in the county this year? Would impact that?
I, I don't, I don't have that, that number prepared to share now. I'm sure I could, I could go back and work with the tax office to get that or.
That's okay. I'm building a house right now. I've contributed a lot to the sales tax.
I'm sure.
I promise you.
Yeah. And whenever I buy a house, I, well, when I have bought houses, I've spent $2,000, $3,000, $4,000 at Home Depot in buying things for that home, so that, that, those type of items definitely are increased.
And plus, our population's grown considerably in the last year, too.
Definitely. Thank you. Now, to look at expenses, the, not much has changed as far as the expectation for general fund expenses, the operating budget expenditures are in line with previous years. I'm just pointing out here that the, the line you see for contracts, grants, and subsidies, which is $130 million, that's the amount that we pay to the schools each year, along with SPCC, EMS, business grants, and business partner payments. And I'm just identifying the inter-fund transfers, which are annual payments to other funds such as our Pago, UCS Pago, and then the, we spend with the volunteer fire departments. And this chart shows revenues over expenses, so to put them together, and the culmination of the revenue projection on top is that we would collect about $346 million in revenue and compared to $357, I'm sorry, $357 million in expense. And keep in mind that in, part of the revenue budget was 28.5 million in fund balance appropriated that we were that we were going to, we planned to spend in the operating budget. And the net number there is a net of $10.4 million, the first white line at the bottom, which means that of the 28.5 million that we budgeted, we only expect at this point to require $10.5 million of that fund balance in order to satisfy the requirements and obligations for the county this year. And then I have a number of $6 million of holdback of restricted revenues that we wouldn't be able to use for other purposes, but I wanted to make sure, identify that, and that we would use, that with that, we would, of the 28.5 in fund balance, we would only require 16.5 to use to complete the fiscal year.
What you said there, Blake, has been lost in a lot of conversations.
Okay.
We funded out of reserves 28 million, and that was to balance the budget.
Yep.
We collected, what, 10, more than we thought we would?
So the, we collected in revenue in three chunks, in sales tax, in the Medicaid Hold Harmless, and then also in registered deeds revenues, about $12 million above what we expected. And so if you take the 28.5 and then decrease the 10.5 here, and then also the 6 million for the restricted revenues, that gives you the 16.5 million. And it says, if we began the year expecting to need 28.5 million, at this point, we only expect to need 16.5 million of that. So I know that it's kind of complicated, it's not a.
But we borrowed that from general fund to balance the budget and keep it at one cent increase.
Mm-hmm. Yep. And that's my last slide.
So one thing to reiterate, we've seen an unexpected payment from Medicaid, Home Harmless, for an additional 2.85 million, over the $800,000 to $900,000 that we normally receive. We have received, continue to receive, an increase amount in sales tax over and above what's been projected, mainly due to the sale of automobiles, real estate, et cetera. We've seen an increase in adverum tax collection rates, but also an increase in the adverum tax collected on the sale of automobiles and on the sale of new homes. Those have generated some pretty significant numbers that were not anticipated and could not be anticipated at the beginning of the year. One of the things that I'll mention at this time that the board should keep in mind as we go through the budgeting process, and you see that delivered to you in the next few weeks, is the sales tax distributions will change in fiscal year '23 due to the adverum rates that were adopted by the municipalities this year. So we're on a lag for how those sales tax revenues are distributed. We will see that occurring in this coming budget year. We don't know exactly what that is at this point in time. We have some projections that we are working on right now, but you should anticipate that the sales tax numbers you see today, or the rate that you see today, will change to some degree in the new year.
Commissioner Rush.
Mr. Chairman. Blake, this restricted revenue is not available for use. Last time we talked about this, it was 5 million, now it's 6 million. Can you explain what that is?
Sure. It's just a general estimate for the excess revenue, mostly in building code. And also, we received a payment for the Medicaid cost settlement, which is restricted to public health. The state paid us twice in FY22 of two payments of about $1.75 million. And so if you put those together, it's close to $4 million, and then others that are sprinkled through the budget, so it's kind of a conservative estimate to hold that back and not count on that for future use.
I got you. Thank you.
And building codes money has to be spent in that department, right?
It does, yeah. Yep. And we haven't always restricted in that way, but we've gone, we've made the effort to make sure we identify that and make sure that it's on the budget.
Okay. Anything else? Deputy Manager Lancaster. Well, then, I guess I can ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
All in favor of adjournment?
Aye.